And you know, it'll take five minutes anyway. Welcome all. We have three distinguished speakers today. Jennifer S. Pardiago. She's going to talk about the impact of COVID-19 orders, the government orders on the aerospace industry. And hopefully, that will probably help us understand how things are going to reboot, get rebooted. Once the business starts after the lift of orders. Jennifer works, she is a partner in a co-chair at Tesla's Transportation Practice Group. Followed by that, we have Fred Lawler. Fred is a same leader in industry. He is, he is very popular. He has a resume workshop at different locations. Currently, the unemployment rate is close to 30%. So his resume workshop and interview, interview tips for college is probably more important than before. Then we have Eric Jessen from Raytheon. Fred also works for Raytheon. Jessen from Raytheon, and she's going, he's going to talk about agile developments and why they are changing the world. And I think that becomes more important when we actually reboot the economy within, within few weeks or a few months. So a little bit about the AIAA Los Angeles section. This chapter of AIAA, Los Angeles, Las Vegas is, is home to close to 10,000 aerospace professionals and their family members and friends. We have a large number of highest density of aerospace professionals in the world. We have Boeing, SpaceX, Northrop Grumman, Virgin Galactic, JPL, Aerojet Rocketdyne, Lockheed Martin, Raytheon, Aerospace Corporation, Scale Composite, Booz, Allen, Crane Aerospace, Honeywell, L3, L Robotics, Millennium, Moog, Parker, Edwards Air Force Base, UTC, Vanderburg Air Force Base, Teledyne. These, these are some of the few companies, but there are additional companies that have popped up recently, which I can't keep track of. So this, so since the lockdown, most of the people are working from home. I'm working from home and we decided to have this weekly events, which joins all of our friends and, and colleagues from all over the LA as well as extended members from all over the US. So this has been going well. I mean, you know, we just started about a week ago and we are learning how to make it better. And our event coordinator, Dr. Ken Louis, has been instrumental in getting these things done. And I'm going to thank him for all the efforts. And Ken, that's all to it.
Okay. So you heard our section chair, Dr. Sohany introducing the, the speakers. And so I think time is 10:05. So, so basically today we have three speakers. So Jennifer is an attorney and she's also a pilot. And she has been working on, you know, helping the aerospace industry, you know, employee corporation, and she knows very well about the, very well the defense industries, supply chains. So she has a lot of insight into the recent situation, the laws rules. So it will, it's going to be a great talk. So let's welcome Jennifer. Let me put down your slide.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Yeah, as Ken said, my name is Jennifer Pertigio. I'm in the transportation practice of our firm. And, you know, in the last couple of weeks, this has been the, with the coronavirus, this has been the same situation. And so we're actually still learning and trying to get up to speed on how this is going to affect not only our clients, but the whole aviation aerospace industry in general. And so I was doing some more research even yesterday because every day something changes and and so I made numerous changes to this PowerPoint since I started because things are evolving on a daily basis. And anyway, if we could go to the next slide. Great. And I think here, this, since this is a global pandemic, you have governments across the world trying to react to this. And, you know, it started, obviously it started in China and then Italy was particularly hard hit. And we have had the advantage of being able to learn from what happened in China and probably more so in Italy from the standpoint that China being closed, more closed society. It's, you, you can't really always rely on the information that's coming out of there. So definitely with the way Europe has dealt with things, we have kind of been able to see somewhat how it's unfolded. And to a certain extent, at least here in California, I know we still have and we've exceeded, but we also have a lot more people. But I, I think we've also taken earlier steps as compared to Italy or China to be able to address some with the shelter at home orders and social distancing. Now, not other states have not reacted as quickly, but by Monday, all but six, six states had shelter at home orders in place. There, as of Monday, there were still some holdouts. I wasn't able to determine whether they have actually now caved and issued sheltered home orders. If we go to the next slide. And I just want to give you kind of overview of what this presentation is going to be about. And so there's state and local orders that have been issued. Federal guidelines and then the federal response with passing, you know, the families first, then the stimulus package, and then also the guidelines for social distancing, closure of non-essential businesses and, and determination of what are essential businesses. Now, in the aerospace industry, you are, we are subject to a lot of preemption. So we are used to following, you know, federal law and, but in certain instances, when it applies to people within the state, the federal government can't necessarily override state governments and come in and issue these orders. So the orders about staying at home, closure of businesses, that actually comes from the state and that's actually the state's decision to do that. So, and as I'll discuss later on, there will be some conflict. But that's what, how our government set up. We have a federal law, state law, and even local and county ordinances. And there are only certain areas where federal law will preempt state law. And aviation, aerospace and all the federal aviation regulations are one of those areas. And then anything for national security will obviously preempt, will preempt state and local law. So, and then finally, Ken asked me to add something in about the stimulus package and its effect for the aerospace industry. So, next slide. All right. And I put this in from Facebook. Your grandparents are called to war. You're being called to sit on your couch and you can do this. And it was just one of those things that struck me as funny because I think as far as the aerospace industry, if you think back to World War II, this is the industry that stepped up. This is the industry that, you know, essentially assisted the men and women to win that war. And, you know, they did extraordinary things in a very short period of time. They ramped up and did extraordinary things to get our country to where it needed to be to win that war. And I think we're also in a situation now where, you know, the, as part of the aerospace industry, it's always been a fundamental part of this country. And I think on a positive note, the innovation and the importance of the aerospace industry, there might be some tough times ahead, but I think they will come out stronger. And and I think that former, like World War II, I think that this is going to be a, I think the aerospace industry is going to come out strong. Next slide. All right. Governor Newsom issued March 19th, 2020 order. And now there has been some concern about the local orders, state orders versus the federal guidelines. Now, the California order that was issued for the shelter in place and essential businesses versus essential and essential activities. There is a lot of businesses and industries that fall within the central businesses and activities. And I think for the purposes of this group, the industrial, the aerospace industrial complex is one of the essential businesses. And this is an essential business on the federal level and on the state level and, and at the local level. But that's appropriate for, that's California. I think there have been some concerns in other states that may not have specifically included that. I haven't gone through the, the orders in each state. But as far as California, you do have the, and also the transportation, transportation industry is also an essential business. And it doesn't just include airlines and buses and trains. It also includes the maintenance and building of those. Now, there's also, there's a breakdown between the essential businesses and then the essential workers for those essential businesses. So a lot of us working from home. You might still be essential, but you might, it still might be appropriate to work from home. But in this industry, especially the transportation, if you have a pilot, you can't work from home. You have a factory worker, he can't work from home. You can't assemble a satellite from home. Just can't be done. So those are the people that will still have to go in. And now, as far as there's essential businesses that can stay open. And there's a, and then with that, and then essential, essential workers. And those people can go in if required. However, I don't know if anybody else has run into this issue, but if you have support staff and admin, they might not fall within what is essential. But they actually might ultimately be essential to your business. You know, sometimes it's hard to get things done without those people. And the question is, how do you deal with those people if they are not considered essential? There's a, if you can determine that there's a reason they are essential, and for a lot of these businesses, you know, it's been recommended that people that are essential that do need to go in have letters of authorization from the employer. So if they are ever questioned, then they can, you know, show the letter and say, hey, look, I am essential to this business based on these exceptions. And, and that way it kind of gives them, you know, a basis for being, having to go in. I'm not suggesting that, I'm not suggesting that they should go in if they don't need to. If they don't need to, then they, they shouldn't. But if somebody is essential to the business continuity, then then it's an option. Oh, I, I do have, I think there's a question that popped up. Do I answer the questions now or later?
It's up to you. You can pick up a question if you want.
Okay. It disappeared.
Okay. Well, then maybe, well, then you can proceed, you know.
Okay. All right. I've never done a webinar before, so that, that part, that part's new. I just saw part of the question pop up, but not the entire question and I
Okay, okay.
But I think, I can, I can circle back to that. Maybe at the end, that might work.
Yeah, yeah, you can do that. Yeah.
And anyway, so let's move on to the next slide. So the state order is similar to the state order, although it's actually shorter. And actually, they focus more on non-essential businesses and what needed to close. And that includes the restaurants, the retail facilities. And when I say restaurants, I mean for, for in, in service. They can, they can continue to, they couldn't continue to have in, in restaurant dining. But as we all know, that you can still do curbside delivery or, or delivery. So so the good news in California is for the aerospace industry and the transportation industry, these are carved out exceptions. And I actually do have, in our transportation group, we also have maritime lawyers. So we actually did have one attorney that kept saying, well, I'm essential because, you know, I, I do maritime work as part of the transportation. It's for the transportation exception. And, but it's actually, there's nothing in there that says attorneys are essential. So we can keep working from home, but our offices are closed. And we, other than running in to get something, we don't have anybody in the office now. Even our, and we do have admin that are still working, but I think the firm saw this coming. So what we did is we had them bring their computers home and our IT group set them all up at home. And so actually even the secretaries, paralegal, they are all operating from home now. And, and it's actually working. I, you know, I wasn't sure how that would work, but but I hate to say this because no attorney wants to say this, but apparently attorneys are not actually considered essential. So I'll move on to the next slide. All right. I got this off Facebook. You know, when all these orders first came out and you know, everybody kind of panicked. And, you know, they were all panic buying and that type of thing. So I thought this was funny from Facebook. What if they close the grocery stores? Well, we have, we'll have to hunt for our food. I don't even know where Doritos live. And but the good news, grocery stores are essential and those have continued to operate. There's no indication that those will close. And and, you know, they've been allowed all the restaurants and to still continue to do curbside delivery or curbside or delivery. And so you have, so they had that going and but there are a whole list of, I mean, the essential businesses that are allowed to continue operating. It's quite extensive. I mean, obviously includes the healthcare and public health, emergency services, law enforcement, public safety, public works, food and agriculture. So it not only includes, you know, the grocery stores, but you still need the manufacturing and production of food that gets to the grocery stores. Energy, electric, petroleum, natural gas, water and wastewater. And as we discussed, transportation, then communications, and then critical manufacturing. So as far as the aerospace industry, that, that actually is dealt with in two different locations. Actually, three, if you include the transportation, critical management also includes the industrial complex for the Department of Defense. So then, then hazardous materials, financial services, chemical. And then the final one is the Defense Industrial Base, which has its own section. So it is an essential business and and that's actually in, that's as defined by the state of California. So for us today, that so that is good for the Defense Industrial Base. Next, next slide. All right. I don't know if you are familiar with Mike Leach. He's the Mississippi State football coach. He texted this or posted this. Sports are not an essential business. And and there's, in Los Angeles, they actually went and listed all of the non-essential or basically on non-essential retail businesses that have to close. And as I mentioned before, these include the retail and, and playgrounds and fitness centers and theaters and wineries, breweries, taprooms, those types of businesses. So those are all essentially closed and they're not, they're not companies that have the operate, have the option of working from home or working remotely. Those are just closed. So, next slide. All right. And then the federal government has taken certain actions to address, address the coronavirus. And what I'm going to focus on are these three items, Families First, Coronavirus Response Act, Presidential Guidelines, and then the Pentagon Directive. Now, the first Families First Coronavirus Response Act, that was, that was first passed, I think a week or two ago. And I did tell Ken, one of my partners in our employment practice actually did a pretty good article outlining this. So if anybody wants more information on this, this act, we're happy to provide that article to you. The one thing, it basically, it was an emergency extension because obviously everybody needs to go stay at home. So how do you deal with leave, not being paid and and also the smaller businesses? Oh, here's the article. So this is kind of a rundown. Again, I didn't write this. My partner in our employment practice, she wrote this and, but it actually outlines, basically it extends the emergency family and medical leave and to allow people to be paid in, for for greater amounts of time than they would normally be paid. The situations are different. Basically, it provides short-term leave for this situation that's somewhat unprecedented. But they don't necessarily need to be sick. So, and they don't necessarily need to be taking care of somebody. It just, it just is for the sole purpose of dealing with the coronavirus. And the other, and the other thing is it does reduce the number of employees that a company has to have for this to take effect. Under the Regular Family Medical Leave Act, there's, you have to have a certain threshold number of employees for it to apply. But that threshold has been reduced. So I have a, I have a friend that's, she has a dental practice. And all of a sudden, you know, something that didn't really affect her actual business, it now affects her business. So, you know, and all these small businesses are kind of struggling to see what were their, what are their obligations under this new law? And then the other, but you can apply for exemptions to this because the reality is this is going to be too onerous for some of these smaller businesses. And, but I think they do realize that. And so that's why they built in exemptions for that. So if, and I think they're posting this, this presentation. So this article looks like it's included. So, but if you do need any information, please feel free to email me and I can get the answers. I, this is not my, the employment piece and this family medical leave act, I haven't gone that much into it. So, but I do have colleagues that have, and they'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. All right. The next slide. Oh, okay. Actually, this is, no, actually, let's see. Yes, next slide. Sorry. And then we've kind of ready to, and so this is just kind of the overview of Families First and so providing paid sick leave. It also provides tax credits to the employers. Free, supposedly free COVID-19 testing, but I'm not sure that's really available. It also expands food assistance and unemployment benefits and increases Medicaid funding. All right, next slide. So, as I mentioned earlier, the, the president has issued guidelines for sheltering in place and social distancing. Because he did it at a federal level and it's really, the shelters in place have to come down at the state level. So he can issue guidelines, but actual orders have to come down from the governors or even the specific counties or mayors of particular cities. But he did, but the guidelines are, you know, fairly specific. I even got a postcard in the mail, actually outlining just the social distancing requirements. So, you know, they're trying to get out the information of what you need to do to stay safe. And then and also in, within these guidelines, and we talked about essential workers that and the one thing I didn't touch on that I should have is the, the social distancing. Even though they recognize that certain people are still going to have to come in to, at the office. You know, there's, there's certain social distancing requirements that they, that you still need to observe. And, you know, it's going to be heightened, heightened cleaning, social distancing, you know, staying six feet apart. And I know in Los Angeles, as of Thursday night, they recommend that people actually start wearing face masks. But I understand that they would prefer that you use something alternate different than, you know, the medical grade ones, because they'd like to save those for the medical professionals. But, you know, they are recommending, you know, bandanas or self-made homemade masks, et cetera. And just to prevent further spread. And again, I do pop into my office because I still have to pick stuff up. And I think we can maintain a pretty good distance. And they still have cleaning crews that go through our offices every night. But, and if we do run into somebody else, we just try to say, keep our distance from them. And so I think especially the, with the way the office and how empty the offices are at this point, it is probably a little easier. I think manufacturing, it kind of depends on what you're manufacturing and what the process is. To the extent that a lot of it's machine-based and in some instances and some factories, you will be able to keep that social distancing. There might be other issues where you can't. And, you know, I know Sees Candy closed down because my order got canceled. And I only bring up Sees Candy because the chocolates are handmade and I believe you're somewhat close together. And when you're making them, it's pretty labor intensive. So it's not really a business, although they actually, confectioners actually do fall within the California guidelines for essential businesses. I don't know how they made that in there, but they do. But, I mean, when the reality is, is if you can't maintain the safety or the social system, then it's probably better to cease operations, which they did. The guidelines that the president issued have been extended through April 30th, 2020. I think this has gone on a lot longer than everybody thought. We had hoped to reopen April 1st initially. And I think a lot of companies had announced that they will be closed for two and a half weeks. And I think April 1st came and went. And obviously it became apparent at that point that the two and a half weeks was not going to be sufficient. And that this is, we're in this for the long haul. And now there really hasn't been any conformity in the timeline because I think the reality is nobody knows. We do have something to go on since we've seen how it played out in China. We do have something to go on, since we've seen how it played out in China and Italy and other countries and even other states. But the reality is, we don't really know how long this will go for. And so different, like Orange County Courts are closed till April 23rd. That may change. You know, every, every county has, was initially different until the Presiding Judge of California Courts then said, no, everything's closed, everything. And there's a 60-day postponement of all trials, et cetera. Because obviously, a lot of the things that we had scheduled are not going forward. But that, and one of the things we did, but lawsuits are actually still getting filed. And I was talking to Ken before I got, before this started. And, you know, one of these issues was with Zoom. And I did see someone chat that Elon Musk had shut down Zoom for SpaceX, because Zoom has now actually been sued for, in a class action suit. It was either earlier this week or end of last week. But it was based on, you know, these privacy violations, et cetera. So there's a lot, there's a lot going out there. And, and there's a lot of issues that we didn't have to deal with before that we will now have to deal with. So let's go to the next, next one. And Ellen Lord issued kind of a directive. And I think it was March 20th, not March 18th. But I think most things went down March 18th. But I, and it's, it's basically declared that the defense contractors are essential national security and that they must continue operations and national security workers should maintain their normal schedules. Now, they did not actually distinguish which projects were, continue to be essential. And it essentially applies to all defense projects. And I think, well, I read an article, one of the things they pointed out is even things that are not really going to be ready for about 10, 15 years, those are still, those are still encompassed within the essential projects. It's, it's kind of a grand sweeping thing, although it, it does to a certain extent, makes sense that you don't want to start parceling out what's, what's mandatory for our national security and what's not at this point. I think, while it may seem overly broad, it's probably, to the extent that we can keep things going on this, we, I believe we should. And I think that was probably the intent of the DOD. Because once you start parceling things out and then you start getting political, things slow down. So I think you don't really want to try to get, it's better to have it all go forward rather than to parcel stuff out. And then you get into additional political fights when you start trying to parcel things out. So, but I think, and again, in California, national security or the defense industrial base is already considered essential. So it's not really an issue. And really, the only issue for the industry is how you continue and maintain the social distancing and the health and safety of your workers.
Question?
Yes?
Does this mean that none of the contractors or defense industry employees have to work from home? That, that, that all of them, 100% of them are going to be working onsite at work as normal? And on the flip side of that, can any of them elect or request to work from home in abundance of caution, even though they are considered essential?
Well, even if you're an essential employee, if you can work remotely, you should, because one, part of the, part of the guidelines are that, and, you know, this is kind of a gray area. There are a number of considerations in the defense industry. There's a higher security level. If you can't protect the national security, if you're working remotely, then likely you will be unable to do that. If you are currently working remotely and they have the proper setups, and I know there's different classifications, levels, I don't know what those levels are. I, and I don't know the different security systems, but there will be some secure systems that that you simply probably can't work remotely. And, and there's very good reasons for that. Because, and one of the issues I'll discuss a little later on is the cybersecurity issues of working remotely. And so that's something to be considered. If, even if you're an essential worker, if you can safely, and let's say safely as a cybersecurity. Hi. Am I back? Hi.
In every meeting, we have this once happening in Zoom. I don't know what to do.
No, the, the Thursday was okay, but I don't know what happened to this one.
You know, it's funny, because I think last weekend, last Saturday, it happened about 10:42.
Okay, I'll put this dice back. Looks at everyone's back.
Okay, it was much easier. Oh, okay. Oh, all right. I think I, I think I asked, I think I asked the question. I think I answered the question. But if I didn't, let me know at the end and we can. I, I'm sorry, I see this chat and I get, I was, okay. I started looking at the chat and I thought it was an additional question. I apologize. All right, let's move on to the, the next slide. There are general impacts that will affect pretty much most companies. And, and these are just general issues that especially attorneys are being called to like, look at right now. And these are just like the health and safety of the employees. And this kind of goes along with the question that was just asked. What do you, you know, what do we do? You have essential workers, you have essential businesses. That doesn't necessarily mean that they need to come in. That means they need to keep working. Now, again, the aerospace industry has a very unique situation due to national security. Although it's not just the aerospace companies with defense contracts. There will also be, you know, trade secrets, you know, designs and that type of thing that might not be appropriate. You might not want things out there that, that you want to have at home, but are those crucial right now? So there's a lot of considerations, because the reality is the health of the employees is a major, is a major concern for the companies. Because, you know, you have, you don't want to lose your worker base. You don't want, you know, if your employees become sick, this will just extend the recovery. There's a lot of issues that deal with just keeping your employees healthy and safe. Remote work. You know, are your, is your company set up to work remotely? I have a, a client that, it's going smoothly now, but they had, I think, day two or day three, I was trying to reach them and I could not reach them at all. And it turned out that all of a sudden, just having all of their employees work from home and not the manufacturing workers, those, those guys are still there. But all the executives and paralegals and, and, you know, the General Counsel Department, which is obviously what we work with. Having all of those people within a day or two start to work from home was too much for their system. So they had to do some immediate fixes to get that up to speed. And I, even our firm, when we went and we work remotely a lot, because we do a lot of traveling for, for litigation, et cetera. And so our attorneys were fairly well-equipped to work remotely, but not on a constant basis. You know, all of a sudden, I realized that we do have a lot of still paper. We have not gone paperless. I don't think attorneys will ever fully go paperless. They might, but as long as the courts require us to serve paper copies and courtesy copies, unfortunately, we will, until the courts change, we will always have to have paper. So.
Follow-up question from the previous slide, if I may. The, the question that I had is, it's one thing to be working remotely using Zoom and video chat or doing things like, you know, SharePoint and, you know, Office document type stuff. But one specific thing, though, is in the engineering industry, especially in mechanical and aerospace engineering, we work with CAD, 3D CADs such as Dassault Systems Katia or Siemens NX and so forth. And all of those are basically managed by PLM systems. So, except for classified stuff, obviously, you'd have to be in a SCIF to be able to do that kind of work. But is there any sort of type of arrangement being made to allow for those engineers to be able to do their 3D modeling remotely from their home workstations over the internet and connect to those PLM servers and work collaboratively from, from home for anything that requires 3D CAD design or, or PLM type stuff?
That's probably a question for your, for your, for your company. Because every company is probably, they're, I would imagine for business continuity and practices, that would sound like a good, and I don't know how long it would take to be able to provide you with those capabilities. I'm, I'm, we do have a separate liability or cyber practice. I'm not in it. So we're going a little, as far as the engineering models and creating that, I don't know how long it would take to create. But as I mentioned earlier, the, you know, this industry, they, they, when there's an emergency, they're actually pretty good at reacting. And so I think it's probably worth some asking the question within your, and I'm sure that's something that they might probably work on. I just, I don't have the answer to that. I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but then again, I don't know exactly what goes into it or how long it would take to put that type of thing together.
Yeah, my, my question wasn't company-specific, it was more industry-wide, because I know the capability exists. That was kind of the intent of the PLM, like 3D experience, for example, is their collaborative PLM system that Dassault Systems uses. But, so the capability does exist, but there's always a concern in the defense industry that you don't want, you know, cloud-based, we want on-premises because of security concerns. And so kind of, given that what has happened right now and the capability does exist, is it being utilized in some way or shape or form as we speak? This was us trying to get.
Oh, and I do not know the answer to that.
I've got a question that's more general for anybody in the aerospace industry. Because COVID-19 impacts scheduled deliveries and has resulted in cost overruns for small companies. Apparently, NDIA had quoted 20% of companies have gone over on firm fixed price contracts. And maybe over 60% of the small companies have cash flow impacts as a result of COVID-19. So this is going to directly impact startups and investors. So I know you mentioned something about the two, like two trillion in relief. But what can be done to keep these companies afloat during this time?
Well, yeah, no, and there is, and I think they have the loans that you, I believe you can start applying for them now. And there will be immediate, and there will also be tax, tax breaks. But what we can do is we can move on and I can go touch on the stimulus package. I think I'm starting to run a bit behind schedule. But, yeah, because I, I think you're talking a lot about what's in the supply chain. And, and also obviously, within aerospace, we have the, the ones with the DOD contracts, but we also have the commercial aerospace. And then, you know, there's also aviation. So, you know, there's, and there's probably going to be different impacts based on a different, where they sit in the grand scheme of things. So we'll get to, so I just want to touch on these things and then we'll get to the stimulus package. And, and so I think we discussed remote work, the challenges of remote work. And, you know, the specific challenges to the aerospace industry. And business continuity, and that's kind of been a huge challenge. Because how do you kind of can, can continue these businesses and keep everybody safe, healthy and continue to meet contract orders? How do you continue to operate? And some of that will be within the stimulus package. And, and there will be loans. And you specifically asked about smaller companies. And I will touch on the smaller companies as well of less, and less than 500 employees. In certain instances, the loans can ultimately become grants. And repayment if certain, certain requirements are met. So, and I think this is all done to help with the business continuity. And, and then, but I think a lot of the challenges right now, and even for me over the last couple of weeks, just putting this together, is just keeping up with constant changes, because I might have put something in my PowerPoint Monday that by Wednesday was just no longer, was just no longer valid and no longer the situation. And so I think that's the struggle for everybody right now, is keeping up with the constant changes and how we're going to continue to react. And I think the thing is, we all want to be proactive. But, you know, you kind of keep getting things that force you to be in more of a reactive position. So, you know, it just kind of, we're all doing the best we can at this point. And we just need to keep doing that. And I think, why don't we go to the next slide before I get too far into the stimulus package? And I think with your questions and everything, we've actually started, we've discussed a lot of these issues. But there are, but cybersecurity, I think that's going to, that's probably a major issue. Essential, essential critical infrastructure. And basically, whether, how you're set up, how each company is set up, what can you actually do remotely and what needs to actually be done in the factory or in the office? And, or, you know, in a classified safe location. And I mentioned this earlier, for essential employees that do need to be at the office, that, you know, it's probably good to have some kind of letter that's issued to the employees that they can provide if they're ever questioned. And I don't think that they're actually taking a terribly hard line at this point about who is going where and what. But it's just, it's just a precaution. And then I think we discussed the practical abilities to work remotely. And again, this goes to security levels, you know, the practical, you know, the practical functions of what you do on a daily basis and whether that is conducive to working at home. And, and I think, and I believe the last question also asked about overruns and the extra additional costs of working remotely and under the situation. It is recommended in general that you track these costs and what is attributable to the over, to coronavirus, directly causing additional costs. And, you know, there will be another phase probably of a stimulus package. And that way, you know, if there is an option to try to recoup those funds due to overruns, and a lot will be in your contract of what might because I know there's different kinds of contracts. And, you know, if there is a cost plus contract, or, you know, if it's a different type of, if it's just a fixed pay contract, but there might be exceptions for, you know, government orders and issues. I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic. It's definitely a unique situation. But definitely try to keep keep track of those costs that are directly associated with the coronavirus.
Question regarding the working at home thing as well. How how much of this would likely remain with more permanency once this pandemic or whatever it is is over? Because I know that, for example, with Yahoo, Marissa Mayer took an active approach to cancel all work from home opportunities and recall the entire workforce back into the office at one point. And but now with now returning work from home, returning again now, is it going to remain that way? Or they will start resitting that once again? And that will be forced to work back in the office after having changed everything in their lifestyle, whatnot, to be working from home?
I think it will depend on the industry. Yeah, my, I mean, just, I'm dying to get back in the office. I really want to be back. So but, you know, I know there are people that like that prefer to work from home and there are other people that prefer to work in the office. I think, you know, different companies, we deal with a lot of insurance companies, mostly the aviation aerospace insurance companies, because they will assign you to defend various cases. They essentially mostly work from home. You know, there are a few of the high level executives that go into the office, but most of the the claims personnel, a lot of them are all working from home. So for them, it was an easy transition. And that's just like, but again, for, and I think you had a gentleman last week that spoke that it sounds like he actually worked from home quite a bit from solving, if I remember correctly. So it really will depend on the particular business, your structure, what you're working on, and whether it's really practical. And also, in some cases, it depends on, there might be a general, you know, the company might approve it, but you might actually have a manager that really prefers you to be there. So it really, it's hard to say globally how this will play out. But yeah, no, there probably might be a lot of people that may now take the opportunity, if they can, to work from home. I don't, but that's, that's hard to say how that will play out. You know, we do actually have attorneys that regularly work from home, just because they prefer to do so and they make sure their practice allows them to do so. I do mostly litigation and that's harder to do from home because, you know, you have, you have exhibits and you have things that engineers send us. Sometimes it's, sometimes, you know, you just have, you can't, you don't want airplane parts and that thing arriving at your at your home. So there's just things that are easier to do at the office. And you have your staff and you have everything that and I had to sign an agreement a couple of days ago. And I realized for the first time, I don't have a scanner. So I had to run into the office just to scan this item. So I don't feel like I would want it, again, but I prefer to be in the office. And but it will probably come down to, how did this work out? And was it successful? Because if it's not, if it's not profitable for the company, then they're not going to continue having people work from home. But if it is, but if it is profitable and they can cut down on office space, then it might be worth it. It really will depend on whether it was possible. And then so then there's other issues and the products liability kind of came out. And Ken and I discussed this a little yesterday. Airbus and I think, I think Ken said it was Virgin's the other one. They're starting to make ventilators. So and I'm also going to skip down to the Defense Production Act from 1950 during the Korean War, they passed this act which allows the president to activate this in times of emergency, requiring companies to make medical supplies. And the government would have the first, and they would have to fulfill the government requirements before anything else. This has not been used towards the defense industry at this point, or the aerospace industry in general. It's actually Ford has started making ventilators and GM has been ordered to do so as well. I believe Ford was voluntary. So this is not something that's moved to the aerospace industry at this point. And probably under the circumstances, it is appropriate for the auto industry to be doing that because it's, I'm not saying it's not essential, but it's not, but they don't have the same national security issues and things that also need to be getting done at the same time. So it's probably appropriate for these companies. And I think, you know, one of the other issues is another concern is and the products liability, it's, you know, if you're under, if you're in order, under an order, or if you're trying to react to a request for the from the government to make other products to support the coronavirus fight, you would be expected to do these relatively quickly. And I think there's a concern if all of a sudden you're changing your manufacturing and to do some medical supplies, et cetera, that are you going to be liable for? And that's kind of questions out there. That's not a question that's been answered. But there is a possibility that, you know, if you start to do these things and they fail, then there is either liability issues or is the government actually going to indemnify them for that? Now, again, this is actually more directed right now at the auto industry. In other countries, the aerospace industry has taken on the ventilators. But here, it's been the auto manufacturers. And and then I think that touching on, I think, also the last question is the loss of government contracts. So if you can't, if you don't have the resources to keep the company, like a business going, is this going to result in the loss of government contracts if you can't fulfill things on a timely basis? Because in the order or the directive from, the directive from the DoD actually stated they expected to be contracts to still be on time. And I'm not sure that that's practical, but that's what it stands at this point. But again, there will be additional phases. This, the situation is constantly evolving. And and the one thing the government doesn't want is for the industrial complex to fail, whether it's the main companies or the supply chain. Let's go to the next slide.
Jennifer, just a little feedback for you, administrative, I don't know if you were watching the chat. There's a hand raised function here and that allows us to alert you that there's a question without having to interrupt you. That way you can come to us and say, pause for questions. That might help us avoid interrupting your train of thought, just some feedback.
Okay. All right, I don't, I'm sorry, would a hand just pop up?
That was me, just to alert you.
Oh, okay.
That does send those.
All right. Okay, and then I just put the airline industry impact, because this is tangential. The IATA, the estimated potential loss of $113 billion to the airline industry. Airlines are currently only able to operate less than half of their normal routes. And they're, you know, they're also looking at furloughs and layoffs. And also, I didn't add this in there, but I believe half of the world's fleet is currently grounded. One of the, one of the things that also came up early on within the airline and charter businesses was, you know, the effect of the coronavirus, not just on the costs of the losses. But I don't know if you all saw on the news of when this all started, a gentleman had taken a coronavirus test and he got on an airplane. And when he landed at the other end, he had a text indicating that he had tested positive. So he did alert the airline. I understand he's been banned from that airline for life. And but but there's a very real potential liability there. He, you know, knowing he had the coronavirus, he got, knowing there was a good possibility that he had the virus, that he got on the airplane, took the flight. And, you know, one of the things that the airline and the charter companies want to know is, what's their potential liability? Where people know that they might have it or they had symptoms? And what's their potential liability to their other passengers? So that's kind of one of the things that has also come up. So next slide. Okay, so the stimulus package. There's a $2.2 trillion stimulus package. Now, this covers a lot of areas. First, they had the $1,200 that goes to individuals. And there are salary caps. So I think for single people, it's people, $75,000. There's a certain reduction between $75,000 and $99,000. Nobody over $99,000 gets reimbursed. For couples, that's, those minimums are doubled. There's an increase in unemployment insurance benefits in the package. And I think there'll be two sections that are most important. It's the first, we'll start with the aid to the large businesses. The $504 billion of stimulus packages geared towards large businesses. $25 billion is is in grants to passenger airlines. $17 billion for companies deemed necessary to national security. And for $125 billion to other businesses. Now, to the, and this is actually, especially with some of the airlines, prior to this, they had done stock buybacks to increase the value of their companies. And so any participation in this will restrict not only salary increases to executives, but it also restricts their ability to buy back stock to try to increase the value of their businesses. And so those are, so those are some of the restrictions that will be on these funds. And next slide. So then there will be emergency aid for small businesses. And this might, this, and I know there was a question earlier about smaller companies. This will affect people of less than 500 less than 500 employees. And this will include zero interest loans. And loans may be forgiven if businesses follow certain conditions. And that includes not firing workers. And the maximum loan is $10 million. The loans, and I am sorry, there's a typo there, the loans will convert to grants, not rents, if used for covering employee salaries, rent, paid leave, utility payments, health insurance premiums, or other necessities or worker protections. This will also include tax cuts and tax deferrals. All right, the next slide. And I've just, those are the two, those are the two sections that are most relevant, probably to everyone here. But just to close the loop, I've kind of included some of the other areas that it will also address. And it's the hospitals, expanded healthcare spending, emergency aid for state and local governments, FEMA, local schools and colleges, the national transit system and food stamp funding. Next slide. And I got these charts from the Washington Post. And these just kind of give you an idea of the magnitude of the coronavirus stimulus package. And the total federal spending is 4.45 trillion, but the coronavirus alone will be 2.2 trillion. And then next slide. And this will kind of get, and then this is kind of the breakdown of all the areas that I discussed. And the large businesses and local government loans, those, that's the largest piece of puzzle. But the small businesses is the next largest piece. So they really are trying to work to, you know, keep these businesses going and provide emergency interim funding. And again, with the small businesses, if they if they follow the certain guidelines and those loans, which are zero interest, they could also, you know, they could also turn into grants and may not be, and they may not require repayment. Next slide. This is, and I just also included this one. It essentially says the same thing. It's just been different. But it kind of, I really just wanted to include it so that you would have a kind of an idea of of the numbers. And and then we can continue, next, next. All right. The one thing I included this, just stay healthy and safe. My dog has gotten more walks in the last three weeks than she has ever in her life. So this is just a picture on one of our most recent, I need to get out of the house walks. And she's also quite good at social distancing. So it, so at least while you're at home, I try to spend some time with your family, pets, and and hopefully, this will all be over before we know it. But anyway, so I think we have, the next thing we do is have some questions. And so please, if you have any questions, let me know.
Anyone have any question, you can raise, raise the hand in your app. Can people hear? Oh.
I
Are we still on?
Is there a video for the next presenter or is that a call in?
There's going to be charts and audio.
Okay, charts and audio only with no video, okay, because the video is showing
Did anybody have any questions for Jennifer?
All right, great, thank you. Nobody has any questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay. I think Fred's next. And a couple of programming notes. I don't have video. And neither will Eric, who follows me.